I call the July 17 meeting of Building to Stop and Planning Board Order, please rise. I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up is Lafayette Cafe, 50 Lafayette Avenue.
Yes, hi. You all have a copy of the plan I submitted last time, and last time I was here, you were going through review of the county comments, I believe, and whatever other comments came in between the last meeting and now, which we got a letter from the Department of Transportation saying only if we do some work in the state right away do we need a permit from them. So that satisfies the county comments. Then we get another letter from the building inspector for the maximum occupancy inside of 67 seats. We only have 54 seats inside and we have 18 seats outside. So that satisfies the building inspector's concerns.
It's fire inspector.
Oh, fire inspector, I'm sorry, you're right.
How many outside?
Eighteen. And you asked me last time about the signs, he's submitting separately on the signs. So, but he's not ready, so I don't have those with me.
He's submitting also a whole facade change. They picked it up today.
I saw a draft of what he might, what he was looking at.
Yeah, Joe picked them up today and took them back to fill out the application, so we'll see what comes in.
Well, it looks like he's removing the Levania, so he's going with more traditional signs. I don't know, he'll present that by himself, I think, or the signed out will, whichever. But you're right, he's got some kind of change to the paneling on the front.
Yeah, the front, the doors.
The doors, yeah.
They're stained glass.
Yeah. Anyway, we'll see that. I guess that an ARB submission or something?
No, well, this board doesn't.
Your board does the ARB, right? So that's what it'll be here for, probably. But it's not a revised site plan, because the site plan doesn't show those things anyway. So I assume it would be an ARB application. Is it the same as to the planning board, when you do ARB?
What is an ARB application?
There's no ARB, it's basically, if it can be part of the site plan, you could do that. What Joanne was referring to is really sign, like when they come in for a sign, the planning board approves the sign.
No, we have to approve the facade also.
Right, but that's what he's asking, if it's called architectural review board or it's just planning.
Okay, so it's the same, but it's just planning. I would like to get the approval to have the seats, because he still wants to operate this summer. And he, I don't know, I want to take for him to get this facade change, it'll probably happen in the fall or something like that, because what I saw sounded like it would take a long time, like to get it all together and to actually build it.
Do you want to say something? Is it 67 total or inside, outside?
I think he meant inside.
You said 1,000 square feet and only 67 tables, 67 occupants, so that would be design.
And you've got 54 and then 18 outside, is that what it is?
That's correct.
All right, so you're on there.
Right, so we still provide a parking for 72, so for outside and inside.
Okay. Do we need any further information?
Well, the only thing, what we were mentioning was, the building inspector, as you know, passed away.
Yeah, I heard.
So we did not get anything from that department. Typically, we get something from the building department in terms of just a review, so they haven't really reviewed it.
I thought with the letter from the fire inspector, it would probably been a letter that the building inspector had written.
Well, he would let that to fire inspector, but he might have commented on the zoning or bulk tables or what have you, so. You don't have that, so I leave it to you if you want to proceed without it, or...
Do we do it subject to the building inspector?
Well, what's your take on that? I mean, you'll come back.
Well, when are they gonna have a building inspector?
Well, there's somebody there now who's overseeing things, so we could probably get something from it.
I don't think there's really any building department issues, so since we're not constructing anything, it's all external. The building has already received a certificate of occupancy for the restaurant. The health department has approved all of the interior stuff that had to be put in for kitchens and exhaust and other things. The only thing the building inspector, I'm sure that they, before it was allowed opening, had to have all the fire safety equipment and smoke detectors and put whatever they are, hell on, or whatever it is that protects against oil fires. So the, I would say, none of that should be, not have been reviewed before you even opened. So I'm gonna say, I don't care, if you want to do it, subject to the building inspector, I don't think there'll be anything that will be objectionable.
So in other words, well, I mean, I guess the issue is, if you're, if you get this, you still have to get something from the building inspector to permit you to use the outdoor.
Well, I'd rather it be clean and just say it's approved, but if it has to be subject to...
I mean, look, my suggestion is either put it over, or if you are complying to approve, subject to. That would be the only way I would recommend approving it.
Well, I mean, they've got the parking, they've got everything else, and what are your thoughts on all this?
I think we wouldn't even be here if they hadn't complied with everything that they needed to up until this point. So I don't have any real reluctance in approving it conditionally or non conditionally either way.
I have no problem, I have no problem approving it, pending that whoever comes in as the building inspector doesn't have some...
Well, yeah, what I would say is, you can make subject to the review the building inspector, that, and he would send it to the board, and if there's a requirement that you come back, you come back, and if there's a requirement you don't come back, you don't come back.
Yeah, I would just hate to hold things up just because...
Yeah, I don't see the difference.
Because one has to wait a whole month, if you're saying the building inspector's coming next week, then it could be resolved next week.
Yeah, there's somebody who can resolve the problem.
Well, Steve is here now, so he'll be here tomorrow probably, so, you know, Steve Conley.
Oh.
So we can, you know, tell him what went on tonight and see.
So if you want to move ahead, it would be...
Mr. Burner, what are your comments on this?
My only question was, when you do this provisional, is there an end date on it? In other words, pending approval by the building inspector, by accident, such a date?
Well, why do we say by your orders, by the next meeting, or whatever that is?
Is that reasonable to expect our new building to still be able to handle that?
Yes.
He might be able to handle it within the next...
Yeah, he may be able to handle it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, if we look great, let's move on.
Yeah, I don't really want to hold it up if we can, so let's just do it provisionally on him doing his thing, so we're not...
All right, so my recommendation would be is to entertain a motion to declare yourself lead agency and indicate this is a type 2 action requiring no further secret review, so.
All right, do we have a motion to declare ourselves lead agency?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
And type 2, no further review.
And type 2, no further review. Do we have a second, Mr. Burner?
I'll make the second, I'll say.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
I approve the motion, Terrence. Anything else?
Now, approval of the site plan, subject to building inspector final review.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the site plan as is, subject to the building inspector's review?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Hall, we have a second.
I will second that.
Mr. Dale, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Terrence, anybody else?
That's it.
All right, we're good. Sorry very much, but I thought that was a pizza box. What if they want to get us done someplace?
Now they have pizza there and they have a good margarita.
They eat to the break in a few days, right?
I don't know, do you think they have a pizza line that actually has stuff online?
I'm not sure, because I see that it's a pizza box.
If you don't have any other...
I was working on that.
Well, I think the lunch menu has the pizza, I don't know if they have pizza in the dinner.
No, they do have something online where there's a menu on the house?
I think so.
Okay.
You know, he breaks in a few days.
So, yeah, I'm presuming yes, though, online, but I really don't know. I've been there for lunch for dinner, yeah.
Thank you.
Take care.
See you, Brian.
Up second, next is 14 Way Avenue.
Good evening, everybody, for the record, I'm Emmanuel, Emmanuel L T C, I'm the attorney for the attorney. I have with me Paul Gudansky, who's the attorney. We were last here in April. We had, at that point, the order was in lead agency. We've got a couple memos now from your planner, Bonnie Fransen, one of which we were able to respond to, the other of which we got last week, and we are in the process of putting together a response. The latest memo that we got from is Fransen, quite frankly, it's just a lot of detail stuff. There was very little substantive in that, in her comments, and so we're, rather than trying to respond, because it is lengthy, I'll give you that. So rather than trying to respond to you orally, we're in the process of putting together a written response that we'll put together and get to you within the next couple of weeks in time for you to consider for your August meeting, which we would like to come back at. The plan has not, what, changed since then?
No, so nothing's changed. I addressed all of our comments from the last memo and the newest memo we have to review, and then whatever changes are needed, I will take care of it.
So the purpose of our appearing here tonight is not to do a lengthy presentation. This project, as you know, has gone in fits and starts, and we just want to get it started. And get the process moving, get the wheels turning, make sure that everything is taken care of. So for example, I mentioned that back in April, you declared your intent to be lead agency. Mr. Chairman, if I could ask through you, if Joanne, you've sent the NOI out to the other interested agencies, interested involved agencies?
I have not, because we have those new things come in and whatever, so I want to be sure we're sending them the right drawing.
That's fine, that's fine. So Paul, what's the, what's your last review date?
5/30.
Okay.
5/30, what is the one that we have here? 5/30, change lot area?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right, and along with that, if it requires a GMO referral, so.
Yes.
Okay, obviously, if you need more copies of anything, please let me know, and we'll get them right over to you. So as part of the submissions that we've made thus far, you have a narrative from me, you have a couple narratives from me, the supplemental narrative that was submitted, it addressed all of the special permit requirements. I realize that special permit comes from the village board, not from this board, but the village board is looking for your input on that, and that is, so it's a good thing that you have that information.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, I and I spoke earlier today. So the village board, for no reason, it's kind of had some stops and starts, or a few, it's a little bit procedural. So the village board has, you know, received the application, and they basically voted to set an escrow for Bonnie to review it, which presumably we have. And that they referred it back to the planning board for review and recommendation for two things, with respect to special permit and secret. So they're asking this board to do the secret aspect of it, which presumably can be taken care of next time, depending upon what the applicant submits, and also with respect to special permit. So, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to do it anyway, so whatever, you know, presentation show you say that you would do for the village board, I suggest you do here, so that this board can opine, if you will, on the special permit aspect. You know, because there's a couple of things that are not, you know, met off the bat, so you're gonna have to address those.
Right, and that's all taken care of in the supplemental narrative that I submitted earlier this year. Hopefully, the board will have an opportunity to review that before we come back at the August meeting. A couple of things that we do not meet are dimensional, that we do not meet are dimensional requirements. State law is very specific that failure to meet a dimensional requirement is not a reason to deny a special permit. We have the right to vote in secret variance, which we will do, for the dimensional requirements. And Rob, if you can read the site on that, I'll get it to you, but it is in that portion of the bill law that talks about special permits. 7 to 725 or so, 235, something like that. It's in there.
Yep, that's how I look at it. Yeah, and we also, the memo that Cyril did in December, kind of talks about the procedure, and it does mention about secret, and then ZBA, and then if granted, then it would go back to the board, the village board. So maybe that would be the game plan for next time, if appropriate, to refer to the ZBA as well.
Right. There are a couple of things that were in Bonnie's memo that require interpretation. I know that Cyril passed on timely, I don't know if you have an acting village inspector. Who is that?
Steve.
Steve Conley?
Steve Conley, that's what I was thinking right now.
So if the board would ask Steve to give his opinion on those items in Bonnie's memo that she raises as needing interpretation, that would be helpful for us back in August.
I think it'll be Steve or something, I know Steve is consulting, so I don't know if he has the title of building inspector, so.
Well, he can review, but he's not signing that, so that type of thing, so.
So, well, if he reviews and sends a memo, and this board can consider, and then we can go off from, go off ahead from there. At what point does this board want to hold a public hearing?
We could do it next time, or before the...
I think that would be appropriate by the next meeting.
Which I believe would be August 21st, right?
That's what it looks like to me on calendar.
And again, it's really on the secret and the referral back, it's not necessarily on the site plan, per se.
So, I think that takes care of the procedural issues. Does anybody have any questions on the substance of the application? Do you want us to review the applications? It's actually not a complicated application.
And I think we spoke about it at the last meeting.
We did, we did.
You want just the two things, the parking, I know that they're saying you need a certain amount of parking, and the cross easement issue.
It's not, when I said it wasn't complicated, it wasn't complicated in terms of its actual operation. It gets complicated when you get a zoning code that starts interfering with real world, which is what, which is sort of what's going on here. So the vehicles that are on site are there not because customers are incoming for shopping or services or anything like that, they are there to be repaired. So it's not parking in the normal sense that the zoning code thinks about it, it's closer to storage. Your code doesn't really address that issue. And so the code has certain provisions with respect to how big a parking space should be, how far apart it should be, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm sure that any of you that have been to an automobile repair facility or an automobile dealership, when they've gone to the storage lot, those cars are packed in a whole lot more tightly than when you go to your, when you go to ShopRite or the AMP or Acme. So what we've done on the site plan is we have shown the parking, we have shown parking spaces that conform to the code. Okay, because we have to, okay, we can't, since the code doesn't address the storage issue, packing them in more tightly, we can't say, well, we can pack in 30 some odd cars and that conforms to zoning, it doesn't, we know that, we said that in the writing. But we do want you to take that into account when looking at this. The board does have the right to grant waivers on the amount of parking, traditional parking, if you will, that are required. And so we have presented information with respect to how we can get enough vehicles into space so that we aren't overflowing onto Route 202, aren't you? That's way north, okay. And obviously, we don't want that to happen, that's, that would be a bad thing. We also, and this was raised in Bonnie's memo, and we've tried to respond to it a couple of times, she questioned whether or not we can count the bays as parking. Your code does specifically address that, and says that indoor parking does count for parking requirements.
So are we going toward, are we going with the word storage or are we going with the word parking? Because I wanted to change it both, if we're gonna go, well, it's parking here, but it's storage here. I just want to know, are we playing with apples or are we playing with oranges?
I appreciate the question, okay. The problem is, is that in the real world, we're storing, in the zoning world, we're parking. Because...
I don't just look at it as if we were looking to have storage laws, we'd have them on books, and maybe that's the reason why the storage laws, when you say, well, the zoning law doesn't account for storage, maybe that's because we don't want to account for storage. I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not for this or against it or whatever else, I'm just throwing that out there as a possibility.
I'm glad we're having a discussion, I don't know why it doesn't address it. It may be that it wasn't addressed because they didn't think of it, okay? You know, it's not, it's not the usual type of situation for a retail business to be storing vehicles as opposed to parking vehicles. So it may be an omission that was unintentional, it may be an omission that was intentional, I don't know. That's one of the reasons why, although I'm talking about storage in the real world, from a zoning perspective, from your perspective in terms of granting approval, you've got to look at parking.
Correct.
Okay? But what we're saying is that the number of parking spaces that would otherwise be, that are required under the code, and I think it's 24 parking spaces.
12.
Or 12, right, 12 parking spaces, we actually can fit many more cars in there.
I understand.
Okay?
You can fit what?
We can fit many more cars in.
Oh.
Okay, in addition, again, under the zoning code, when we're talking about parking, indoor parking spaces are allowed, specifically, as expressed and I've quoted that, okay? We have three bays in this proposed building, okay, that's three parking spaces.
Six.
Right, because they have a lift.
Yeah, six.
You can put one on the lift and...
Yeah, that's what you see.
In front of us, keep the numbers good.
If I could count out an account...
We're never gonna be talking about the number of actual cars that are gonna be there. So my question is this, if you build it where the parking spaces are the legitimate size of the, what you used as the ShopRite size, but then put 27 cars in there, park them over the line, park them wherever you want, why would there be any need for variance or even paint?
Well, I agree. And that's why, that's why this board has, that's why I'm pointing out that this board has the authority to grant a waiver that would reduce the official number of parking spaces, okay, to what we could accomplish, okay? And they're gonna be parked with...
So can I ask this question, please? Are you familiar with what other municipalities do, because obviously Bonnie shops are...
Yeah. I have, I'm familiar with the situation in the town of Clarkstown, because I represent an automobile dealer in Clarkstown. And in Clarkstown, they do make a distinction between vehicle storage and vehicle parking. Okay, I don't remember if it's actually in the code, I think it's done in a straight-up link. Okay? But they do recognize that there is a distinction.
So what do you mean, so what do you mean six spots?
No, we have six in the bay, and then one outside, so it's a total of seven, we need 12.
Okay, so you're five short.
Yes.
But where are you fitting all the other cars that you can cram in there?
Next door.
Well...
I mean, the plan, he's gonna, he needs that space open to get in and out of the bay, so he's not gonna, it's not like he's gonna cram a million cars there.
So you can cram them in next door, yeah.
Or he's gonna operate it in a way that he's not, he's still able to move cars around.
So there's only one space outside, is what we're trying to say?
Yes.
Well, how many, one official space?
One official space.
So we're gonna cram how many cars into one zone?
No, there's also six spots in the...
But not cram them into the bay, we're talking about outside.
We're not, the plan is not to put anything, you know, hopefully, outside.
Well, no, no, there are, there are vehicles that are being parked on 14.
They're being stored on 14.
I know, but he kind of, he maneuvers it around.
That was easy to get in and out.
Let me make a, let me throw out a suggestion that may be helpful, because I know it's hard to visualize one against the other. If we provide an exhibit, not a part of the plan, okay, but a separate exhibit that shows how all of these, all of these cars would be stored on our regular basis, you know, and an ongoing business basis, and that way you can take a look and you could see. We do have some photographs that we've submitted, but would a plan that shows that be helpful to you?
I'm inclined to think that if you just didn't paint the lines, you could basically do whatever you want, and no variance, keep it the way it is. That way, if the property's ever sold or moved into another business, we haven't given the new people the variance to pack as many cars as they want if it's not gonna be used as an auto shop.
But this lot's a totally another piece of property.
Well, the two pieces of property are being used together.
But I thought I read in here that they were not gonna be...
I just almost got it wrong.
Not being merged.
Not painting lines.
Parking as many cars as they want.
Because your code requires that.
The code requires.
So if you, if you paint it with 12, there's space for that now?
I don't think we can.
No, we can't. So what I'm saying is, don't, pretend there's no variance, and you have to make the spots painted legit what ShopRite size is, and then put as many cars as you want over the line.
No, no, but then that would violate, that's the problem.
But on the old private property, you...
I mean, it's violated, the board has the ability to grant us the waiver, like you said, so you could do that, and make it, if the U separate changes, they would obviously have to come back.
I really appreciate this conversation, because you're seeing exactly the conundrum that we have.
And we're talking about two different properties as well.
Well, we're actually only talking about 14.
With one continuous bay line.
Not separated. We're talking about, we're talking, only 14 is before you, okay? But, okay, 14 will be used to provide storage and support services, okay, for the business that's going on in 16. They are two different donorships, and will provide the deeds for that, lots are not going to be merged.
So in other words, 14 is gonna be used as a parking lot?
It's gonna be used for storage of vehicles, okay? And there's also going to be a building on there with three bays, okay, that will be used for preparation for the work that goes on in 16.
Okay, I guess I'm just confused if we have two separate properties, why, if there's only two separate properties, we should be discussing each of them separately, correct?
Well, only one exists and is in use, and so therefore it doesn't need site plan approval, that's why it's not before you. 14 had a house on it, a non-conforming...
Still there, right?
Yeah.
Is it still there? Yeah, 14, okay, the house is non-conforming in the district, we want to knock it down, put up a one-story building that will contain this maintenance, this prep facility. The idea, the idea is, he's currently doing everything in the building at 16. He's doing prep, he's doing bodywork, he's doing painting, he's doing everything. Business is good, okay, but he's getting slowed down because he can't do all the stuff that he needs to do at the same time.
Is it the same business as 14?
Yeah, it's two, it's a collision.
Okay, so it's not two separate businesses that we're talking about, we're talking about one business that's...
It's Darryl.
Gotcha.
Okay? All right, and we have that, okay, in our narrative, and we will paper that, okay, to Rob's satisfaction in terms of, in terms of an easement. So that the two would have to be used together.
An exhibit would help.
Okay, this is clearly not your run-of-the-mill situation, so let's get an exhibit.
So now, Rob, what happens if, let's say this goes on exactly the way that is proposed, and now let's say at a later date, they want to sell 14, what happens?
Well, it depends what they want to use 14 for.
Yeah, well, if they know what we want to use 14 for, and I make... Yeah, well, I know what we want to use fourteen for, and it may depend upon what we want to use sixteen for.
And not you, I mean, a new owner, right? A new owner comes in and just buys fourteen.
Right.
Which would be unusual, right? I mean, under certain.
Nothing's unusual around here anymore.
Short answer, Mr. Dale, is I'm ninety-nine and forty-four, one hundred percent sure that they would have to come back to you for revision.
Right, and, and part of the issue is, let's say they sold it to a stranger, if we do the cross easement, the cross easement would require sixteen to allow fourteen to use sixteen, and sixteen, and fourteen allows sixteen to use fourteen. So it, they'd, they'd be married to the extent that, as a practical matter, four, you know, fourteen sixteen will probably have to be in the same ownership forever, you know? But it's possible to, not the same ownership, but, but live in, live in harmony.
They would be married.
Not necessarily, that doesn't mean living in harmony either.
I'm sorry. I said married.
Not necessarily.
So we're covered, basically, Dale.
Yes.
We can, yes.
We want an exhibit, so that is just gonna show everybody what's going on, okay? And again, this is not the, a usual, you know, clean, cut and dried situation, so let's get the exhibit and, and see if we can't work something out.
Okay.
And that's, again, this board, don't forget, you have the village board, they have to.
I'm going to Z B A, I believe, too. Yeah. It's, it's our job to make you understand.
That's what my wife says, you know?
Well, help us understand how this whole thing works, that's what I want. Yeah, well, that's, okay, that actually is a lot easier, that actually is a lot easier. There will be an easement, okay, let me, let me step back, let's take away from this particular situation. Your code has a provision that says that you can have parking off-site in a remote location within a certain distance, I forget what it is, from the principal use, okay? But in order to have that off-site parking and make it count for zoning purposes, you have to have permanent right to use that off-site parking. How do you create a permanent right under, under property law? You, you create an easement for the use of that parking area in favor of the principal use. That easement gets recorded in the county clerk's office, okay, and runs with the land. So anybody who buys that remote parking lot buys it subject to the right of the principal user to park. Okay, that works. Okay? So if these two guys behind you get divorced, that's on them.
I actually don't know.
He's the guy, he's the guy, he's got it in two different LLCs.
Okay.
Okay, he controls both LLCs.
Same owner, different, different corpse, right?
Yeah.
Yes. That makes things a little bit easier.
Yeah.
Because unless, unless you're going to be fight rich itself, my friend.
No, no.
It happens. But no, you have all that.
Yeah.
But that, but that, but that is, if it's. One versus two separate corpses.
Exactly.
Okay, I got you.
That's actually much better.
Yeah, no, that's a much easier situation.
We would, we would try this if it was two separate owners.
Yeah.
Oh, I know plenty of people that have tried this. He would, I told you. No, that's, 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 I appreciate the complication of that.
Okay.
Go to the bridge.
No, going up Wayne Avenue.
Right, but two or two collisions over by the bridge, right?
I'm sorry.
Cool car on top of that, I'm really.
I'm like, way better, but.
By the firehouse.
Yes. I know what this is, but I thought that was the name of it.
No, that's France. Okay. All right, so we're good with during this August. Okay, derive a motion, what's that, derive a motion to adjourn this to August twenty first?
I'll make that motion.
Do you need a little public hearing date?
Uh, yeah, that, that's part of the motion.
Yeah, and a public hearing date on the twenty first is part of the motion, I said that, didn't I? I heard that, do I have a second?
Yes.
You can't say, I'm just. I'll sign, Dale. I was ready to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, we'll see you next morning. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And Joanne, I mean, go, can you leave a copy?
Have a good night.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, okay, last, well, next on the agenda is old business, we have I V T Rock and Justice LLC, setting a performance bond, which I have here somewhere, you want to go over it?
Yeah, so real quick, I asked Mr. Sewicki to calculate a performance bond for them to post, which is basically, in the event, you know, they start construction, and something happens, they go under, or they, you know, have issues, et cetera, that the village could finish the project, at least in terms of the public improvements that are necessary, so that they'll recover. And so he has calculated that in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand. We've sent that to the applicant, they have no objection to it, so the way it works, this board sets the public performance, the amount of performance bond, and then it'll go to, they will submit a performance bond, that will go to the village board for acceptance.
So I'll make a motion to accept the performance bond as, as laid out for two hundred ninety thousand dollars. So if I need to break it down.
No.
Motion, Mr. Dale, do you have a second?
I'll second your motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, do you have any votes, Mr. Lanes?
No. Can I ask a question? How is this going to affect twenty twenty-three Wayne when we start planning with this one, and we still haven't settled that?
That's totally separate issue, so let's finish this, and then we'll talk about that.
Do we have a motion to set the date for the August meeting to August twenty first?
I'll make a motion for it.
Mr. Dale, you have a second. Mr. Burner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, you want to talk about.
Does the meeting close?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to close the meeting.
Close the meeting?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Dale was the first, Mr. Howver was the second, Mr. Burner was the third, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.